Sorry.
Test run.
It's a good one, too.
I was told I don't do things loud enough.
Okay, so I'm calling the North Borough, South Borough Regional Combined Open Meeting into session at six o'clock on Wednesday, October 30th. Each chair needs to call in there. Oh, so just to let you guys know, we are doing remote participation tonight with Lynn Winter. So as we go through the meeting, we're gonna do it by North Borough, then South Borough, and then Region has to do roll call since Lynn is remote, okay? So when we do, when we're voting for things, that's how we're gonna do it tonight.
Okay, so I can call South Borough to order?
I will call North Borough to order and the Union to order.
And I can call Region to order, sorry. Okay, so our first item is audience sharing. So there is none tonight. So our second is action on minutes. We are voting on the amended minutes that are on top of your packet, not the ones that are in your packet. And the corrections are in green. So we'll start with North Borough.
I so move for the North Borough K-8 School Committee to accept the open meeting minutes for the combined meeting of September 18th, 2019.
Okay, so Joan from North Borough.
I second that motion.
Okay, Lauren seconds it.
So move for South Borough?
Second.
All right.
I'll move for the Region.
Second for the Region.
All right, Paul and Dan. And then Paul Desmond for South Borough and Roger for South Borough seconds.
Okay.
All right, so North Borough on-
Do we need the Union as well?
Union.
Yeah. 'Cause, yeah, there's four of us on there.
I'll move for the Union.
Okay, so Paul Desmond for the Union.
I'll second for the Union.
Okay. Okay, so all for North Borough, all those in favor? All those oppose? And all those abstain? Um, South Borough? Okay. And then, um, Region? Yes?
Does that have to be roll call?
Well, it has to be roll call for Region.
Yes.
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 Oh, sorry, Mike.
We gotcha.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so our next item is-
Oh.
Oh, and Union, sorry.
I was in favor, so. Roger? Yes, no, okay.
Roger?
Roger, are you Union?
Roger, are you Union?
You're on the Union. Do you wanna vote for the minutes for the Union? Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, so all passed unanimously.
Okay, so our next is a school bus consultant's report.
So last, last year, in the winter of 2019, seems like a long time ago, we contracted out with school bus consultants to do an analysis or an assessment of our school start time and basically looking at our transportation system and what is the feasibility of a zero-cost option to change the start of school and not impact the cost of transportation for our district. So this evening, Griffin Scott from School Bus Consulting is remotely participating in our meeting and will present the findings and answer any questions that the committees may have. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Griffin Scott, who will give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Griffin. Thank you, everyone, for being here to, uh, listen to the results of our school start time assessment. Unlike Griffin saying we engaged, really, last school year to do a study about your school start time. We worked closely with NRT, who's your transportation contractor, to, you know, get all the data that we needed in order to be able to provide this analysis. An overview of what we're gonna be doing over today is current bell time structure, your bus route deployments. We'll also go over some key performance indicators. And then we'll discuss some potential scenarios and how it impacts transportation. Here we have a model of your bell time structure. There's a lot going on here, so I'll give you some information about it. From the left to the right here, you can see it's starting at 5:00 AM and going until 5:00 PM. You can see these bars here in the middle. These represent your schools. And the length of the bar, they're day length. You can see here, this very first bar is your high school. And it's starting at 7:20 in the morning and ending at 1:50 in the afternoon. You also notice there are different colors for each of these bars. And those colors represent what bus tier that school is in. So the green bar, which, which includes the high school, is your first bus tier. These yellow bars here are your second bus tier. They consist of your middle school for both North Borough and South Borough. The blue bars here, you can see your third bus tier, which just includes the North Borough Proctor Elementary School, North Borough Dade Elementary School, and also St. Bernadette. And then in the fourth tier here, you'll see there is both South Borough and North Borough Elementary Schools. So interestingly here, you really have two different bell time structures for North Borough and South Borough. North Borough really exists in a four-tier system. And South Borough really exists in a three-tier system. As you've noticed, there's no South Borough schools here in the third tier. So while we claim they're in the fourth tier because they're at the same time as the fourth tier for North Borough, you know, this is realistically the third tier for South Borough. So when you hear me say South Borough's in a three-tier system, this is really what I'm talking about. You can also see here, there's lots of statistics for each of the schools. On the left here, you have your number of planned riders, so not the number of actual riders, but planned within your routing software. Next, you have your length of day. And then you have the number of routes that are assigned to each of the schools. These parentheses around these numbers represent that that school is actually sharing a bus with another school. So Margaret Mary is actually riding along with Troy or Middle School. And you can see that on here, Woodward is actually riding with Mary then, and Peaslee is riding with Lincoln. These yellow areas on the outside, those represent your prime time transportation zone. So this is really when buses are on the road and for how long. So you can see in the morning, buses are on the road, students for about two hours and 35 minutes. And in the afternoon, buses are on the road for about two hours and 15 minutes overall. Next, we have a map of your school locations. And this is just to give everybody an idea about the geography that the transportation system has to, you know, go through in order to really pick up these students, what road, general area that the transportation has to deal with. So you can see, you know, you're really divided here by, I think, 495, I believe. And Algonquin High School's really in the North Borough area, not quite the South Borough area. You can also notice on the map, there are these white dots with vehicles in them. This up here is the transportation hub, this is where they're based out of. But then NRT also has a transportation yard where they keep some of the buses that serve the South Borough area. These white dots with the buildings inside of them represent your schools. These pink buildings are your elementary schools. This red one represents St. Bernadette. These yellow with brown ones are your middle schools, Troy or Lincoln. And then you have Algonquin High School here as the blue school. Here we have an example of the North Borough route. This data is actually GPS data taken on April 29th. So these are the times that your buses were actually on the road transporting students. So you'll notice here, there's a bunch of different colored lines. These gray lines represent your deadhead time. And the deadhead time is, is essentially the time that a bus is getting from point to point without getting students on. So early in the morning, your bus would start at the transportation hub, come down to the start of its first run, which would be a high school run. And that first pickup would be at 6:32 AM. That bus would then go around this neighborhood here and arrive at the high school at 6:48, where it would then drop off students. You can see that the bus then travels to its next run, which would be a middle school run, and picks up its first student at about 7:11 AM. Picks up students throughout this neighborhood and then drops them off at Melican Middle School at about 7:25 AM. Your bus would then travel to the beginning of its North Borough early elementary school, which happens to be Proctor Elementary School. And the first pickup would be at about 7:39 AM. Keep picking up in these two neighborhoods and then drop off at Proctor at about 8:02 AM. The bus would then perform a deadhead trip to get to the very first run of the Norman, pardon, not Norman, sorry, excuse me, the North Borough late elementary school start, which is Lincoln Elementary. Picks up its first student at about 8:28 AM. Keep picking up students throughout this neighborhood and then get to Lincoln and drop off at 8:46 AM. So this is an example of a North Borough route, what would typically happen on a morning deployment. So here we have the South Borough route. You know, same order, you would start at the transportation yard, get down to your first high school pickup at about 6:46 AM, travel around the neighborhood, so you need to pick up students, and then drop them all off at the high school at about 6:50 AM. That bus would then travel to get to the first stop in this school run. You can see it starts here at about 7:25 AM. Continues to pick up students throughout this neighborhood, and then drop off at Troy or Middle School first, and then Margaret Mary at 7:46 AM. The bus would then perform a deadhead trip to get to the first pickup of the elementary school run, which starts at 8:26 AM. Continues to pick up students, drops off at Maryton Elementary, and then travels to elementary school to drop off at 8:49 AM. So here we have a deployment model for your morning. And what this really shows, buses are on the road at a given time. This is all of the routes that you have for your morning deployment. You can see here, the different colored bars represent the group. The, the blue bars, the darker blue bars you see at the front here, that represents your high school run. If it's yellow bar, the yellow bars here represent your North Borough middle school run. The orange bar down here represents your South Borough middle school run. These purple bars represent Borough early elementary. These little red bars here represent your St. Bernadette run. The light blue bars here represent your South Borough elementary. And then the green bar, your North Borough late elementary. These dashed lines going from the bottom to the top represent your bell time. And then the numbers you see here are what we consider your peak deployments for those tiers. So you can really see, you know, your first pickup, because the high school is at 6:15, you continue to pick up students in the morning, having all picked up by 6:35, and then begin to drop them off between 6:40, with the last student being dropped off at 6:55. Your buses would then split up between North Borough and South Borough. You can see that the North Borough first pickup would be at 6:55 AM. Continue to pick up students until they're all picked up by 7:10, and then drop them off between 7:25, with the last student dropped off at about 7:40. So that North Borough bus would then go to a North Borough early elementary school to start picking up students. You can see the first pickup is at about 7:30 AM. Continue to pick up students until they're all picked up by 8:00 AM, and then begin to drop them off between 8:05, with the last student being dropped off by 8:15. That North Borough bus would then move on to the North Borough late elementary school room, with the first pickup being here at 8:05. Continue to pick up the students until they're all picked up by 8:30, and then begin to drop them off at about 8:40 to 8:45. You also have a few North Borough buses that do serve St. Bernadette. I think there's about three of them, which you can see here, with that first St. Bernadette student being picked up at about 7:35, having them all picked up by 7:55, and begin to drop them off by 8:00, with the last student being dropped off at about 8:15. So those are your North Borough routes. The North Borough would go blue to yellow to purple or red, and then to green. For South Borough, you would start here at the blue bars. And then you can see the orange bar here, South Borough middle school. First pickup, those students would be at 7:00 AM. Continue to pick up students in the morning until they're all picked up by 7:25. And then begin to drop off by 7:35, until the last student is dropped off at about 8:00. Then those buses would go to the start of their South Borough elementary run. You can see the very first student picked up about 7:45. Continue to be picked up until 8:15. So the buses then travel to get to the elementary schools and are dropped off around 8:30 until about 8:50, the very last bus getting there. So this deployment is actually very good. It has everything that we expect in a deployment. We normally expect to be peaks and valleys. And what the peaks represent, like I was saying, is your deployment of buses. You know, this is when you have the most buses on the road. And this really shows you the demand and need of the number of buses you need in order to perform a deployment. The valleys represent those deadhead trips that I'm talking about, where they don't have students on board, but, you know, it's a very necessary time. You know, if you don't have enough time to get from the end of one run to the start of another one, you know, you may need two buses instead of one. So these big valleys we see here are a good indication that there's enough time for your buses to actually get between runs and hopefully not be late. So here we have your afternoon deployment. Very similar, you would expect buses to start at the high school. Then for North Borough, you'd go to these yellow bars, the purple, and then to the green. South Borough, your blue bars. Go to your orange bars and your light blue bars. So you can see here, the first high school students begin to be picked up at about 1:55 PM. The, the majority of them picked up by 2:05. And your start, get dropped off by 2:10. That last student being dropped off at about 2:40. Your buses would then head to, North Borough buses would then head to the North Borough Middle School, where the earliest students are picked up at about 2:25. Those are likely your stud- students. And then the rest of the students are picked up in 2:30 and 2:35. And then they begin to be dropped off at 40, with the last student being dropped off at about 3:15. Those North Borough buses would then head to either the North Borough early elementary school or St. Bernadette, where, where those start between 2:55 and 3:00 PM for St. Bernadette. They're continued to be picked up and then dropped off around 3:30, with the last being dropped off from the North Borough early elementary schools at 3:40, and the last drop off for St. Bernadette being about 4:10. So the buses who finish with the North Borough early elementary schools would then move on to the North Borough late elementary schools, with the first pickup being around 3:25. The rest of the students are picked up by 3:45 and then begin to be dropped off by 3:50 to 4:10. The South Borough buses, after their high school run, it would then go to the middle school, where those first pickups likely, again, are about 2:25. And then pick up, um, the majority of the students by 2:45 and begin to drop them off by 2:55, with the last student dropped off at 3:15. They would then head toward the South Borough elementary school. The first pickup is about 5:05. All the students picked up by 3:20, and then begin to be dropped off between 3:25 and 3:45. So again, like I said, with the morning deployment, this looks really good. You have clear peaks and clear valleys, which again, represent that there's likely enough time to get between your runs, which is a great sign of not being late. You know, there are some signs here that, you know, your bell times are a little too close and it causes the pickup times for some students to be a little bit after their bell time. You know, a clear case of this is really your North Borough late elementary schools. You can see, we don't have all of the buses starting up until 3:45, which is about 25 minutes after the bell time. So, you know, there's a little bit of issue with how close your bell times are, but it does seem, you know, because of the proximity, you're able to complete it within a reasonable time. Next, we have a bunch of key performance indicators for your route. You can see that you had planned to transport 4,568 students, but you actually ended up transporting about 1,997 students, which is about 44%. These ridership counts were taken in the spring of 2019, so they might not be perfectly representative of your whole year. You know, this, you might have higher ridership in December. Unfortunately, we didn't have data on that. So for at least the spring, this is representative. Next, we have a number of route vehicles. So these are the buses that are performing routes for you. Then we have your vehicles for 100 planned students and then actual. Bees is a metric really to give us an idea of, you know, do you have enough buses? Do you have too few buses or do you have too many buses? Our general expected range is between 1 and 1.3. Anything under that, we would consider extremely efficient. Anything over that, we would consider, you know, you might have too many buses for the amount of students that you have. So you can see it, it's pretty drastically changed, you know, when looking between planned and then actual. When looking at planned, having a 0.72 actually represents, you guys are planned to be really efficient with the number of buses you have and the number of students you plan to transport. Uh, when we look at the actual numbers, we can see it goes up to 1.65. And that's a situation where we would say, there's likely some room for improvement as far as the number of buses needed. You know, you likely have maybe too many as far as, you know, the actual ridership that, that is happening. Next, we have your daily vehicle runs. So these are the runs that are within route. Again, even this is your AM and PM together, so this is necessarily just one panel. This is both. This is your whole day. So how that breaks out for your average runs per vehicle. Your North Borough vehicles perform about eight runs a day, where your South Borough vehicles perform six. And that's exactly what we would expect for a four-tier system of North Borough and then a three-tier system of South Borough. We normally expect the number of runs to be double the number of tiers you have. So with four tiers, eight is perfect for North Borough. And with three tiers for South Borough, six is exactly where we're expecting it. So that's a great sign of, you know, an efficient use of your buses and a piece of your buses. Next, we have your average runtime. So you can see for high school in the morning, the average runtime was about 21 minutes, and in the afternoon, it was about 20 minutes. For the North Borough middle school, the morning and afternoon were about 25 minutes. For North Borough elementary school, for the elementary schools, the average runtime were 23 minutes in the morning, 25 minutes in the afternoon. For South Borough middle school, the average runtime was 28 minutes in the, in the morning and 23 minutes in the afternoon. For your South Borough elementary school, it was 37 minutes in the morning and 24 minutes in the afternoon. So your average arrival departure time, that's, you know, how early are your students arriving at school before the bell time? And then how later are they departing after the bell time? So your high school, on average, arrived about 32 minutes before their bell time and then departed about seven minutes after their departure time. For the North Borough middle school, the arrival time was about 27 minutes in the morning and the departure time was about three minutes in the afternoon. For the North Borough elementary school, the arrival time was about 15 minutes before school and 10 minutes after school. For your South Borough middle school, they arrived about 17 minutes before school and 11 minutes after school. And for your South Borough elementary school, they arrived about eight minutes before school and about seven minutes after school. So the average available time between the next run, this is the average essentially deadhead time. So this is, you know, not with students on, on board, but, you know, how much time does the bus have to get from the end of one run to the start of another one? This, this is where we would hope that, you know, you have, you know, a good amount of time, plenty of time to get to the next run. You know, if it's relatively low, that any kind of hangup with the run beforehand could cause the next run to be late. So we typically want these to be, you know, at least five, you know, to 10 minutes. So you can see here, you have, you've got some relatively good numbers here. Your high school is 22 minutes between the morning run, 13 minutes between the afternoon run. So when you're thinking about that, it would be- So when you're thinking about that, it would be 22 minutes between the end of your high school run and the start of your North Borough Middle School or South Borough Middle School. And then in the afternoon, 13 minutes. And then for your North Borough Middle School, you've got 14 minutes between our, at the finish of the North Borough Middle School run to the start of the North Borough Elementary School run in the morning, and then 11 minutes in the afternoon. And then for the North Borough Elementary Schools, those early elementary schools would have 11 minutes to get to the start of the North Borough Late Elementary School run in the morning and then four minutes in the afternoon. For the South Borough Middle School, they would have about 19 minutes to get from the end of their middle school run to the start of their elementary school run, and about 13 minutes in the afternoon to get from the end of their middle school run to the start of the South Borough Elementary School run. And as there's no run after the elementary school run for South Borough, you know, there's no actual, there's no time. Um, so for your average planned capacity utilization, what this is, is, you know, the number of planned riders divided by your standard capacity of the vehicle, of your buses. Um, but actually, the standard capacity of a bus is about three students per seat. And so your buses have about 24 seats in them. So that comes out, um, the actual standard is 71. If you were to do three by 24, it would be 72, but for some reason, they're labeled as 71. We know that doesn't necessarily work for middle school and high school students. You normally can't get three students per seat, uh, you know, they grow up and get too big. So for middle school, we actually taper it down to 2.5 students per seat. And then for high school, we taper it down to 10 students per seat. So that's why you can see here, the capacity numbers get reduced for, for the grade levels. Um, so for the high school, you can see your planned capacity utilization is actually 110%. Um, you might be wondering how it can be over 100%. This is actually relatively typical interpretation and suggested. Um, we'll see the reason why in the next, in the next box. Really, you know, we don't see a high ridership in high schools, so it's pretty typical to overplan runs because we know that it's likely going to be all of the students actually getting on is relatively low. So that's actually a very good sign to see that, you know, your at least planning your high school is going to be efficient. You can see the North Borough Middle School has planned capacity utilization of 66%. And the North Borough Elementary Schools have a planned capacity utilization of 48%. The South Borough Middle School has a planned capacity utilization of 84%. And your South Borough Elementary Schools have planned capacity utilization of 51%. Um, so you can see in the next box, we have the average actual capacity utilization. So this is the actual riders that we, we gathered during the spring of 2019. So you can see that it dropped, you know, really low to the high school, down to 27%. So you can see, you know, planning it at 110% actually only got to about 27% of ridership. So, you know, it, it makes sense that we're planning it over, over 100% because only about 27% actually got on. You can see your North Borough Middle Schools were about 41%. Your North Borough Elementary Schools about 25%. And then your South Borough Middle Schools about 37%, and your South Borough Elementary Schools about 27%. So when I was discussing with vehicles per 100 students, you can see here, the actual ridership, you know, there's likely room for improvement if we were to base runs on actual riders versus planned. Uh, the problem with that, you know, basing it off of actual versus planned, is that, you know, North Borough and South Borough are required to provide transportation to students who are eligible. Um, you would need to put in place some type of policy where you either have students sign up for transportation and opt out of transportation, or, you know, you have some type of time limit where you're keeping track of who's riding, who's not. And maybe after a certain amount of time, if someone isn't riding and you planned for it, um, you know, you can send them a warning saying, you know, we noticed you haven't been using our service. Um, you know, do you need our service? Do you want to continue to have the option for it? Or, you know, can we take your bus stop away because you don't utilize it? Those are really kind of the only ways to get closer to your actual. Um, without any kind of policy or anything, it's really hard to, to base routes on actual ridership because it changes day to day, of course. You know, one day, you know, a student could be riding a week, and then, you know, your mother wants to take you to school the next day. So that, that can really, you know, jumble up your actual ridership. And if you base your lead on actual ridership, it can, it can put you in some predicament. So I, I do, um, put some caution there. So next, we have your financial KPIs. You can see that your fiscal year 19 regional transportation reimbursement fund was $790,235. Next, we can see your regular municipal transportation contract costs. So overall, there's actually three contract costs. You have regional contracts, a North Borough contract and a South Borough contract. You can see that it pulls up to about $1,926,420. And then you can see, it's reduced down $1,134,185 to the reimbursement cost. So your regional cost for the reimbursement is $1,148,000, which is reduced down to $356,723 when you include the regional reimbursement. Uh, North Borough contract cost is $413,027, and South Borough is $364,435. So you can see the, the regional reimbursement, you know, takes a pretty big chunk out of your, your transportation cost and should be considered extremely important. So the rest of it, if you guys really just kind of break it out. Um, so your annual cost per vehicle before the reimbursement is $60,200. Um, that's right in industry averages, you know, this isn't high. Um, this is actually a little bit lower than our industry average of about $70,000. So, um, you know, you guys are, are getting a reasonable cost. And then even more so when you include the reimbursement, which brings it down to about $35,443. Uh, that breaks out to a daily cost per vehicle of, before the reimbursement, $334.44. And then with the reimbursement, $196.91. Your annual cost per run breaks up to about $8,960, which is reduced down to $5,275. And then your daily cost per run is about $49.17 without the reimbursement and $29.31 after the reimbursement. So your annual cost per planned student is about $422. Um, that increases to about $965 when looking at the annual cost per actual student. But then the actual student cost would be brought down to $568, when including the reimbursement. Your daily cost per planned student would be about $2.34. That increases to about $5.36 when looking at the actual student. But then that, that would be reduced down to about $3.15 when including the reimbursement. So for all your financial key performance indicators, you know, really show that you guys are, are right within the industry standard. Um, it is a relatively good thing. And then on top of that, your reimbursement fund really brings down your, um, your rate to about half of the industry standard, which is, which is, you know, amazing. So our conclusions about your current situation. Um, the current four-tier and three-tier structures of North Borough and South Borough allow asset utilization to be extremely high, which means your buses are being reused efficiently. And if the more buses, or the more runs per bus, the better considering you pay for the bus and not the run. Your performance metrics indicate a high planned service, uh, level of service and efficient use of buses during the days that GPS data was analyzed. Um, while your overall capacity utilization is well-planned at 70%, the actual ridership capacity utilization is considered low with an overall rate of 30%. Um, I still don't know why your students aren't riding. Uh, maybe you'll be able to, you know, give me a little update on that at the end of this. But, uh, you know, that's, that's a unfortunate statistic to see. You guys have a low-cost transportation operation, which is, you know, after the reimbursement, about half the cost. That reimbursement covers 41% of your transportation cost and, you know, is extremely important to this. Um, so your considerations for start time changes should include attempting to have high schools in their own tier so that every bus can perform a run of the high school and qualify for that reimbursement. So this implies, you know, one of the other tiers likely need to switch with the current high school tier or, you know, you're going to have high school runs occurring at the same time as another school and then any bus that doesn't serve the high school won't qualify for reimbursement. And it would be a significant investment. Um, you know, another consideration that, that isn't, that was an alternative is, you know, you could shift the entire system later without, um, flipping any of the tiers so that, of course, would push that latest tier even later into the day. So for alternative bell time scenario, um, we developed usually the exact same 18, 19 runs, except for the start and end times, which would shift with the bell time. So if we shifted the bell time one hour later, those runs would be shifted one hour later. Um, so we didn't reroute anything. Um, it's really just shifting those runs along with your bell time to see if, you know, there's an opportunity to continue to reuse your buses efficiently or as for the shift of the bell time. Now, runs that were being cleared by one bus are at the exact same time so that one single bus can't perform both runs at the same time, of course. So for alternative scenario one, we shift the high school into the second tier. For alternative scenario two, we look at shifting the high school back into the fourth tier while shifting all the other tiers, uh, one tier up. And then alternative scenario three, shift the high school into the fourth tier, the middle schools near the third tier, and the elementarys in the first and second. Let's take a look at those. So for alternative scenario one, we shifted our, we shifted just the high school to 8:30. Um, really what, what this scenario is going to show you is the impact of not moving any of the other schools out of the way of the high school and, you know, including the high school runs at the same time as your North Borough Early Elementary School runs. So let's take a look at what that does to your morning deployment. You can see here, within 8:30 start time,
Griffin.
The North Borough high school runs are occurring about the exact same time as your North Borough Elementary School run and the end of your South Borough Middle School run. Sorry, you think so?
Yeah, Griffin, can, for the sake of time, and I think the details are outstanding, um, but can you summarize the bottom line for us, um, in terms of recommendations?
Yeah, no problem at all. So really, for scenario one here, you can see, we, we hit a peak deployment of 48. For the afternoon, we hit a peak deployment of 57 buses because it's occurring at about the same time as your, uh, North Borough Early Elementary Schools and South Borough Elementary Schools. So the pros and cons of this, you achieve a later high school start time, but you'll need at least 25 additional buses that would qualify for regional, um, reimbursement. So your potential cost at least $800,000, so about 1.5 million. Um, also, looking for an additional 25 drivers during the national driver shortage is not the best idea. Um, it's going to be really hard for contractors to try and find drivers. Um, it's just a, you know, really hard time to get CBL providers right now because of the great economy, also, you know, Walmart and Amazon pooping up a lot of CBL drivers, giving them great wages. So that's, that's a big issue with trying to add buses. So for alternative scenario two, we moved the tiers up by one and moved the high schools to the last one at 9:00 AM. Um, you can see here, we actually hit a peak deployment of 32, which is the same number of buses you'd use right now because we wouldn't expect you to add any buses here. But you can see your North Borough, um, or your middle schools are picking up now at about 6:20 until about 6:50. So that, that could be a potential issue for your middle schools. Um, in the afternoon, we see the peak deployment, I want to get to 30, so we want to see buses added here. You've got clear peaks and valleys, which is a good, uh, indication that you'll have enough time for your buses to get there. So if it's acceptable for the high school to start this way, you know, with the last student getting home at about 4:20, this would be a no-cost option for you guys. The pros, no-cost option, tends to achieve your higher high school time. And the cons, it doesn't achieve a later middle school start time. A lot of these, uh, art school later studies suggest that schools should start later for both middle school and high school. Um, so unfortunately, it doesn't achieve that. And then, of course, your high school is potentially releasing too late with the last student arriving home at 4:20. For alternative scenario three, you can see, um, the high schools are shifted to the last tier and then your elementary schools are shifted to the first and second tier, and the middle schools in the third tier. Here, we can see your elementary students would be picked up at the earliest at 6:20. Um, you can also see here, we hit a, the peak deployment of about 34 buses, which is two over your 32 buses. And that's really because your, your middle school runs are now occurring at the same time as St. Bernadette, which is normally occurring during your elementary school time. And so you can see it pushes us up just past our 32 buses. In the afternoon, you can see a similar scenario. The St. Bernadette buses are pushing the limit for as far as, you know, your current route buses of 32 and pushes it up to 33. So this scenario has potentially no additional cost. You know, if you're able to work with, uh, St. Bernadette, maybe move those runs around a little bit. And then to achieve the later middle school and high school start time, there's a potential need for two additional buses if you can't work with St. Bernadette, which would cost you up to about $120,000. Um, your elementary students are picked up as early as 6:20, the majority are after 6:40. And then your high school students are potentially too late, your last student arriving home about 4:20, although the majority are at 4:00. So here we have the summary of all your alternatives. Um, provides you a view of the bell time on the top here. Gives you a quick little bell change description. And then we can see the max PM deployment and your max PM deployment compared to 32 routes. The folded number is your peak deployment. And then any kind of plus represents how many buses you would need to add at that peak deployment. So alternative one, you can see it at 25. Alternative two, it doesn't add any. And then alternative three, um, potential added two. And of course, your potential cost down here. So that's all I've got, um, you know, are there any questions?
Anyone? Wait, I have a question.
There's another question, I'll, I'll go over our conclusion real fast.
So, we have, we-
We, we believe in alternative scenario, oh, go ahead.
We, we have one question for you. Um, so Griffin, when you were talking about, um, uh, basically projected ridership versus actual ridership, and you were talking about some of the solutions in terms of pulling, um, families to see whether they would ride, um, is that something that you've seen is pretty common in other districts?
Yeah, so it's something that's becoming more common, um, in more recent years. I've worked for that school district in Texas who just this year implemented this. And the unfortunate part for them was that they didn't have a very high response rate. So, you know, if they were to just, they ended up not really using any of that information because they only have, uh, I think they have about 30,000 students in their district and only about 7,000 students responded. So if they were to route based off of just the students who responded, they likely would have missed a bunch of the students who, um, didn't respond. And then they would have had to, you know, reroute all of these routes after school started. Um, and so what they ended up doing was just using all the eligible students again to base their routes. And then after the fact, you know, taking ridership count and then really taking away bus stops where they noticed no one's riding. So, uh, after the first year, you know, it, it wasn't great. You really need a good response rate from parents. So it, it, it does have some issues with it, but if everyone responds, you know, you're in a great scenario where you can actually route- in a great scenario where you can actually route towards who's gonna ride.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Griffin.
Yep, so, so really with our, our conclusion, alternative scenario would achieve your desired goal of a later start school time for both middle school and high school, so we would recommend that one. But if a later start time for your middle schoolers isn't necessary, the alternative scenario two also achieves the goal for your high school students. Um, some other things that would need to be considered that aren't necessarily transportation-related, you know, what are the impacts of changing times for business staff, teachers, drivers, support staff? You know, what's your parent and community buy-in? Uh, you need to keep up before and after-school care if you move the elementary schools, uh, athletics and field trips, you know? Do you have light on your fields? Because, um, starting at nine AM for your high schools and releasing that late, you know, would definitely push back some of your sporting events and clubs. And then, of course, your student instructive minutes and changes to class schedule should be considered as well.
Thank you.
There's a lot. Did we hang up on him? Okay, so next, we're gonna have the school start time task force updates. Right, are we gonna keep on with?
So, obviously, a lot of information to digest in terms of a transportation-centric solution. So I think he left by saying that it's, you know, this is just looking at bus arrival times, dismissal times. It does not take into consideration all of the other logistics like athletics, um, music programs, um, childcare. So it's, in my opinion, an oversimplification of looking at the data. I will say that the start time later task force has done a lot of great work. We, um, re-energized our efforts in the spring of last year. We've met over the summer, and we've had two meetings on this fall. And really, our, um, there's a three-phase process to come to a recommendation. Um, and the first phase is really around educating parents why sleep is important and, um, you know, why sleep hygiene is important and how it impacts adolescents. Um, and I also think it's important to talk about that if we do change the start time of the high school later, it's not going to be the, be all, end all of children's stress, students' stress. There are many other factors that we need to consider. So education really is the first phase. The second phase really is identifying the options. So we were presented with several options. Um, I believe there are other options that we need to investigate and, and look at. Our five-year transportation contract expires this year, so, you know, we are going out to bid for new transportation contracts, and I think we need to, um, take a close look at the start time initiative and how that folds in with the bids that we move forward with. And then the last phase really is seeking feedback from the community. Um, you know, how does the community value this? Is it fiscally, um, affordable to the communities? Um, what are the logistics and concerns? You know, athletics, childcare, um, all of those issues that we would need to address if we did, um, decide to, um, bring this to the committee, um, for a bigger conversation. And the last phase, the final phase, is a recommendation to the school committee. So are we making a recommendation to, uh, start later? And what would be the fiscal impacts, um, and also the impacts in terms of families? So that's the plan for, for this year to move forward. Um, I did have a conversation with Griffin around the scenarios. Um, and I, I do think that, uh, there are some other analyses that need to take place before, um, before we say the only scenarios are the ones that were presented this, this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Kathleen's been part, part of, is the liaison to the start time task force?
Yes, but I did not do this fancy rack.
Jennifer.
Just because this is my first time, I'm interested in why one, but not all, private schools get busing. Why are Saint Bernadettes?
So it's mass general law that we have to transport, um, residents, you know, children of residence to any private school within their boundary. So Saint Bernadette takes advantage of it, um, and it is the only private school within our boundary that does.
Okay. Um, and why are there early start times in the elementary and late start times? I wasn't familiar with that.
So because, to make the tiered, um, start time work for the transportation, we have to have a tiered start time for our schools, so we have schools tiered starting, so it allows for efficient use of our transportation services.
Okay.
Um, in the, these steps and these phases and everything, is there also a point that you're talking to the neighboring schools, the neighboring districts who have changed this or have done it? I personally have heard some negative things from the neighboring towns that have already done it. Um, so I'm just curious, is that part of it, too, is reaching out to the other communities who have done it or are in the process of doing it and?
Yeah, so that's sort of in the phase that is occurring now and has occurred over the summer. So, um, so one of the big questions was, what are the big pitfalls? And so, um, the people in the research and development subgroup, uh, were working on gathering all that data. That hasn't been presented to us yet, but-
Okay.
That, that was one of their charges that they were taking on.
And I would, you know, we are unique, um, you know, having two P K through eight districts and a regional high school. And, you know, as Griffin said, you know, in terms of the finances, um, we are, um, getting a great value for our transportation as a result of regional transportation reimbursement, where other districts who are not regional schools don't have that, that luxury.
Yep. Good, so we've been talking about later start time for a long time. Tonight was the first time I've really heard a significant amount of emphasis on a later start time for middle school. I mean, is that, is that science also there? I mean, is it as compelling as it has been for, over the years that we've heard about for starting high school later? This was, I mean, this makes a big difference in some of the alternatives this guy, Griffin, has put forth. If, if you don't have to do that, it, it seemed to me, I was, I was just a little surprised at, I mean, I suppose, you know, turn a switch when you become a freshman in high school and need more sleep, but this was the first time I've really seen it kind of brought out in such a, you know, such a specific way.
Well, but if you look at where our middle schools start right now, seven fifty-six and eight oh three, and, I mean, they're already within a good timeframe for the people who are saying, you know, it should be a later start time. So we don't have as big of an impact, I think, on our middle school kids. Not to mention that half of them are getting to those middle schools early for band or, you know, extra help or whatever it is. Like, they take advantage of before school. Um, so there's more we can do on the middle school level to impact, impact that, you know, changing that.
But I think moving the middle schools earlier is creating a problem, solving a problem.
Right, definitely.
Last, um, weekend, I screened a film called Sleepless in America at the library as part of a wellness series that I was, um, that I've been doing there. And so there's a lot of data to look at, um, regarding sleep and kind of one-stop shopping that can be streamed online and perhaps should be considered a resource as we all come to terms with what the, what the research is showing, what the science is showing.
So one of the things that the start time later, um, task force is accomplishing is going to have a website as opposed to just a drop-down off of our district website. So we'll have a separate website that will, and one of the biggest things that they're doing is accumulating all of these different reports and studies and, um, you know, YouTube videos and past present, presenters to our district as well as other districts and, um, so that there's just gonna be a wealth of, of resources. So I'll make sure to tell them about that and make sure that that's included.
Yeah.
Kathleen, do you have any, yeah, I'm particularly interested in phase one, educate. And, you know, educating parents about the need to, you know, and, uh, develop good sleep habits with their own kids. I mean, it all starts at home. Um, you know, when are, you know, are kids being allowed to stay up till midnight playing video games and, you know, or, or are they, is, is there, you know, so the educate part, what, do you have any specific examples of things that you will, you know, the task force is considering actually educating parents on, you know, these are effective ways to help get your kids to, um, you know, prioritize schoolwork as soon as they get home, family time, fun time, sleep time? And really be disciplined about that to ensure that their own kids receive the amount of sleep that they believe their own kids require.
Well, I would say that yes, um, there is, that is part of the communication rollout plan, is to not just educate parents as to why high schoolers should start school later and therefore get more, because they'll get more sleep, but also, we may not be able to do it. So, uh, part of the plan is also to educate the entire community on sleep hygiene and the things that you can do. That is, um, that has already been started. Greg and I and two of the committee members created a superintendent's, uh, what did you call it, superintendent's corner?
Yes, a small corner.
Small corner, right. A public service announcement. And it was just basically, so starting the conversation, my guess is, because not many people, other than high school parents, are really paying attention to this issue, when we start really talking about the possibility of changing the start times of the elementary schools, I'm guessing that people will really start paying attention. And so then I think that our efforts in terms of the education, uh, um, opportunities will start being more availed, too.
Thank you.
Uh, Greg, I'm glad to hear you say that you're gonna be looking at more options than these three because, I mean, just my looking at the data, it does bring up some interesting things, like the average, um, the bus gets to the high school on average, I think it's at thirty-two minutes before the bell time. That, to me, sounds like, uh, a lot. I mean, I know that kids do, you know, often need some time to go locker room or whatever they need to do, but, you know, I don't think they need thirty-two minutes, so it seems like there's opportunities to squeeze things, is, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I think he mentioned some of the, you know, having the sign up, not, you know, sign up for transportation, some of those-
Yeah.
-technology out there in terms of if Amazon can scan packages and figure out where the packages are, we can, there are things we can do to make it more efficient.
Yeah, I would say there's things we can do to get a hundred percent participation on something like that.
Yeah.
Kathleen?
Um, Harvard has implemented, if you matriculate to the college, you have to take a course on sleep before you arrive on campus. Um, and they have, starting to delimit the, uh, the times that their buildings are open and allowed, and they're delimiting clubs and things like that from meeting at night. And perhaps those resources have enough gravitas that we could piggyback on them and consider that as well. So colleges are really starting to push that, and sleep pods are now being brought into a lot of businesses to allow for napping in the afternoon, um, not necessarily for wellness, but for productivity. So we're starting to see a lot of resources, a lot of, um, momentum for that. Um, but, uh, it would be good to consider what the colleges are looking for since that is such a big part of the preparation here at the high school.
Sure.
Kindergarten does nap time, yeah. My favorite parts of the day. Um, I'm wondering if going into a, a contract here with the buses, if there's any way, if there's any data or any surveys that schools have done about why, I mean, the amount of elementary kids, uh, particularly North Borough, that are not taking the bus is overwhelming. Is, are they walking? Are they close by? You know, I mean, if there were any way to survey about why? And, because also, with that many kids coming in, it must cause like traffic nightmares in the, you know, in that neighborhood and coming through. So, you know, anything to, to figure out why and, and maximize that, um, you know, financial asset, I think, would be interesting.
Yeah, I was saying similar thing. Um, I think this was a, a great, a great presentation, a great thorough report, and I think it's definitely eye-opening on where we miss things and don't, and the idea that we schedule, and I know this year you guys did, scheduled four thousand students and only half of them take it. It just seems like it's a, it's a lot of time and effort to make those routes, to make everything for then only half the kids to show up. It's like, you know, and then you have all the complaints, well, this isn't at my house, it's at their house. Well, maybe if we knew you weren't taking the bus, then it wouldn't have to be at their house. But anyways, so I think it's definitely something that needs to be figured out, you know?
Yeah, in many ways, it raised more questions than it answered. But that's good. I mean, that's what first drafts and first passes at, at efforts are about.
Yeah, I, I think I was stunned by the amount of people who don't take the bus, but at the same time, I, it makes sense because, for example, right now, my daughter is on crutches, so I have to drive her to school, which I normally do not do, and the amount of people driving to school stunned me. And the traffic backups and, you know, all the people who are driving to school, and if you just talk to parents anecdotally, it's because the buses come too early. So it seems to me there's a kind of a, maybe not easy, but a maybe low-hanging fruit here of, of seeing, you know, whether it's a survey and having an incentive to complete the survey to get people to really do it, um, to see if people are really gonna be taking the bus. And then I wonder, I just really wonder how much time we'd be able to give our kids, how much more time we'd be able to give them to sleep if the buses simply, you know, we just had fewer buses.
So I think, I think a, a big thing with North Borough particularly is with our elementary schools being neighborhood schools, the schools are relatively close to the homes, and I think that's why they're not putting their kids on the bus necessarily, because you save the time in the morning. Like, the kids can have longer time eating breakfast if they don't have to get on that bus. I can just swing them around the corner, um, you know, three minutes versus having to get them up a whole half hour, forty-five minutes earlier and out the door. I think that's a big thing in North Borough with the way that the schools are, that the way they don't utilize it. Plus, these numbers, I'm not sure, the whole Proctor thing, like, we didn't have buses and now we do. Like, our numbers, our bus ridership has definitely gone up. Um, I remember the lines for pickup, um, I live point three miles from the school, so I'm, obviously, I could put my kids on a bus, but the, the line pickup, I mean, ten, fifteen minutes waiting just to get up to pick up your kids versus now, it's like three minutes and all the kid, all the kids are picked up because there's more kids riding the bus now. So those numbers have changed.
So I'm, um, like others who said, um, I'm fascinated with this, um, difference between capacity and utilization, I guess. But I don't honestly quite understand the implications of it. I'm sure that they'll, everyone saw that tonight, I'm sure they'll come out as the committee works forward, but it doesn't, it certainly doesn't make sense to me that even though it says, um, we basically plan for forty-five hundred student number, and we're only actually using two thousand, uh, of the, of the capacity. If we were really using, transporting all forty-five hundred, that would have to make a difference in the schedule. So that maybe, you know, if the buses are half empty, it's gonna take longer to get students on them and off them. So there's a lot of things about this that I don't quite understand as far as the implications of, of, um, you know, this, this, this utilization compared to capacity.
Well, the, the primary, um, starting point is that in order to be, um, in order to get our reimbursement, our regional transportation reimbursement-
Right.
We have to provide a seat for every kid more than one and a half miles away from the school. That's, right, so that drives that planned number.
I clearly understand that, but if you were actually taking the time to fill those seats and, and empty those seats-
Right.
You know, our schedule would be longer, a lot different.
Right. So, so I guess my point is then, you, so, so that's how we get to thirty-two buses. And then you go into South Borough and North Borough and all the complexities, right? Because South Borough's grade span and North Borough's neighborhood schools, and one is three-tier and one is four-tier. Um, so that is the next deep dive that we have to take, is, okay, what, what are actual numbers? Is regional transportation reimbursement something that we can, um, something that maybe North Borough and South Borough don't need? Maybe it'll, in the end, come- Maybe it'll, in the end, come out financially more feasible if we don't plan for, plan it that way.
So just to follow on, so... There's this, we, we, there was this mention of, let's try to find out why students aren't riding, riding the bus. I think it's a good idea, but does it really make any difference why? What, what, is it going to make any difference to the design of the, of the system?
Well, I think nine out of ten, it's because the bus comes too early, and they're spending too much time on the bus. And a, and a parent can just drive them.
So I think too, that, like, if you look at school buses in the fall versus the spring, they're much different. Like, I know when my kids rode the bus in the fall, it was packed to the point where no one else could get a seat. Like, it was just so full. So I think they're, they did this in the spring, correct, last year?
Sorry, what, what did you say?
That in the, in the fall, I-
I understand, but you, the, the last thing you said?
This data is from the spring.
This is data is from the spring.
Okay.
I also think that a lot of kids in high school drive, I think they drive their neighbors. I think they play sports after school, or they have their activities for school, so they're not necessarily taking the buses maybe one way or the other way either.
Well, plus over the course of the year, more and more students-
More and more students get their license, right. So I think that that's made a big difference in some of it as well. But I think that's, you know, something would help.
So I just want to make a comment too around the financial piece of this, is that we have three separate bus contracts. We have a Northborough contract, a Southborough contract, and a regional. The only district that really gets reimbursed is the regional transportation. So, so it's something, it's something we're looking at when looking at our bids and the actual costs and what impact regional transportation reimbursement has on the town of Northborough and the town of Southborough. Something we're investigating.
But that was the point about, in terms of state, every bus could get to the high school somehow, I think. Significant, that was the point.
So, in fact, to, to look at this scenario three, which was the one that, you know, I thought kind of made the most sense in terms of middle school starts a little bit later, high school starts a little bit later. People would take it on the chin, two Northborough elementary schools. But they only have, if I'm reading this right, like fifteen routes between, I mean, we never, we never asked this guy to cost out what it would take to kind of maybe consolidate those routes, get that down to ten or something, and, you know, bring in a, a, I mean, ten more buses for just that route, or, you know, do something where these first six lines of the, of the grammar schools, you know, involve Northborough and Southborough, get, get kind of manipulated in a slightly different way. And I, I think it's, I think it would be quite burdensome to go back to just Northborough and say, okay, we're going to do this for the, for the two districts, and you guys are going to pay the price. You know, it just, I, it doesn't, it doesn't seem right to me. It'd be interesting to see what the total cost would be. If you just threw a few more buses, had just that problem, could it, could it go away? And if so, you know, at what cost? I mean, I suspect it won't be the million dollars that scenario one had attached to it. You know, it would be a few more bucks than scenario two, but it might be something that's palatable to both towns if we can, if we can kind of pull it off. That, that's the one thing that I didn't like about this, this last proposal. And it doesn't look like it, you know, I don't know whether they just, they tried to address it and they couldn't figure out something, or did they not put their minds at work, just say, well, this works, and, you know, here's the, here's the cost for alternative three. If they could revisit, that might not be a bad thing. Otherwise, I mean, I thought it was a terrific report. I think it's saying some great things about the central office and how well we've manipulated and managed the buses and the contracts and the costs. And I, I think one thing he said was, we're spending about sixty grand a year for a bus. And he said, that's just slightly lower than the standard, which is seventy grand a year. Well, at thirty-five buses, or whatever the number was, a ten thousand dollar per bus savings per year. I mean, he might think that's trivial, but I think our taxpayers, I think that's a terrific job, so it's kind of worth pointing out to God.
The last thing that I'll share is the, the Opportunity Act, the bill, to kind of restructure the funding for education also has reimbursement for special, out-of-district special education transportation, which we've never seen before. So we bear the, the full costs of transporting students who receive services outside of our district for specialized education. Part of the Opportunity Act is to look at reimbursing us for that money. So that is something that we need to keep an eye on and look at in terms of continuing to reduce our transportation costs.
Okay. Okay. That's great. The district review report is our next item.
All right.
So about a year ago, this summer, Superintendent Johnson at the time and I received a letter stating that we, as a district, were selected to have a targeted program review by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And at first, we kind of shrugged our shoulders and said, oh, okay, what does that entail? And then we thought about it, and it was a, we also thought that it was a great opportunity with Christine announcing her retirement and then transitioning in a new superintendent. It was a great time kind of to assess our programs and really think about what are areas of strength in our district and areas of growth. The targeted district review process is really designed as a value-add program for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's different than the coordinated program review, which is a compliance review, where we actually have to implement a bunch of steps. With this district review process, recommendations are made, but we're under no requirement to implement those recommendations. However, many of the recommendations are very helpful, and we would want to move forward. So the targeted review addresses one of the following sets of standards. So it's governance and administrative systems, which is composed of leadership and governance, human resources and professional development, and financial and assets. And the second is student-centered systems, which is curriculum and instruction, assessment, and student support standards. And again, this program review is conducted under Master Law, Chapter Fifteen, Section Fifty-Five A. And again, all districts across the Commonwealth at some point will have a targeted program review. So in terms of the methodology, it was a four-step process. The first process was really to engage in a district self-assessment under the, the two standards. So in the fall of last year, the leadership team and educators, we spent a lot of time assessing each indicator and where we, as a district, fell in terms of performance. So this was a great exercise in terms of self-assessment and self-evaluation. And again, this has been a great tool as we think about areas for growth and areas for improvement in terms of our, our district. From that self-assessment, which we submitted to the department, the department selects an area of focus. And the area of focus for our district was governance and administrative systems. Step three of the process was a site visit from a visiting team. And then lastly, sharing of the final report, which took place this fall. So the site visit was conducted January seventh to ninth, two thousand nineteen. It was a team of five, and I think when they arrived, they were a bit perplexed about the configuration of our district, and they actually had to call more people in because they didn't realize how complex it was. Their work included approximately twenty-six hours of interviews, focus groups. They met with seventy-five stakeholders, including many of U S School Committee members, and met with district administrators, staff, students, families, and association representatives. They observed fifty-seven classes throughout the district, eighteen at the regional high school, thirteen at the two middle schools, and twenty-six to seven elementary schools. And they observed twenty-four ELA classes, sixteen math classes, ten science classes, and seven other classes. So in the report, the program review identified strengths and areas for growth. An area of strength that was identified was the collaboration that exists between the superintendent school committee members, municipal offices, school leaders. And it's really focused on improving students' performance, opportunities, and outcomes. So it's a very collaborative environment in both communities, and very strong support for education. And then another strength was a district really, instruction benefits from positive culture and climate that supports teaching and learning. Our, we have excellent educators who are committed to their work, who collaborate with one another, and that was a highlight from the visiting team. Another area of strength was the work that happens in our human resource department. There's a strong infrastructure that supports the three districts and really understands that we're a human resource organization. Another strength was, I noted, was our comprehensive professional development program that supports all teachers, and it's aligned with the standards, Massachusetts standards, and curriculum initiatives, and it really focuses on staff interests and needs. And lastly, a strength noted was the business office has procedures and protocols to ensure that segregation of duties dictated by best practice and statute and security of cash and checks. So some of the policies and procedures that we have, our business office was noted as a strength. So identified areas for growth. So they gave some recommendations around what we need to look at moving forward. And one of the recommendations was that our planning documents do not include annual action plans, disaggregated data, timelines, who's responsible, measurable student outcomes, inconsistent procedures for monitoring the progress and reporting on and refining plans. So as you know, what's leading a lot of our work was Division Twenty-Twenty, strategically planning for our future, which has been an outstanding document that's supported our work. But it is twenty-twenty, it is time to reauthorize that plan. And this recommendation actually aligns with the work that will be happening in terms of rethinking about a strategic plan and making it more of an action plan, and making sure it's data-driven, timelines, and it's focused on measurable student outcomes. So another area of, of growth was, was noted that there was significant turnover in the business office over the past two years, and that they talked about the importance of having a momentum and consistency in terms of staffing. And the other area was that the district does not have a manual business office practices and protocols. So as we've talked about, one of the action items was to relook at our organizational chart in terms of how we function operationally. That was presented to the school committee this past spring, and we've made some significant implementations of positions on that organization chart. And I think we're in a good place moving forward. I think in terms of the manual business office practices and protocols, we have a dra, a draft manual that we actually will be sharing with the budget subcommittees that actually will meet one of these areas of growth. So more information to follow around that topic. So another identified area of growth is, they shared that the district's budget documents do not include all district income and expenditures, and they are not transparent. So I disagree with, with this in terms of the transparency. I think that the process, the budgeting process and the documents are very transparent. However, when you look at the big picture of all the revenue and the income that we receive from grant, grants and so forth, it's not in all one location in terms of budget presentation. So really looking at how we incorporate the full picture of funding that we receive as a district, as districts, so that it's clear to the community and the taxpayers. So one example would be to make sure that our federal, state grants that we receive are part of the budget overall expenditure report that is provided to the committees. So again, areas for growth. One of the notes was that we do not have signed agreements with the towns of Northborough and Southborough for documenting services provided to the towns. So the towns charge the districts for certain services, such as water and sewer. I think it speaks to the collaborative nature of our communities, that we have not had to have a written document saying this is, this is how it will take place, this is what will happen. But I think it is best practice. So one of the actions that we'll, we'll be taking is working collaboratively with our town administrators to develop those written agreements, documenting the services provided by the towns. And the other recommendation really was around capital planning. So I think we've done an excellent job as a district around capital planning. We've had, you know, a five- to seven-year outlook in terms of the projects that we need to consider as we move forward in the budgeting process. But one of the recommendations was to add a narrative component, to tell the story of why it's important and where we are. So I think that's one of the, one of the goals this year is to add that narrative to our, our capital planning documents. So again, this, this is tied to strategic planning and creating action plans, ensuring that the planning documents have clear goals and are based on analysis of the historical, longitudinal, and current disaggregated data. So we're looking about areas for growth and improvement in terms of student, making sure we are looking very closely at the historical data, how our students are achieving, and making sure that's a key component to our strategic plan and our action plans moving forward. So in terms of another recommendation, so reallocating resource, resources to ensure that business office is staffed to serve the needs of the three districts. Again, the organizational chart that we presented to you this past spring really began to talk about the organizational structure that we need at central office to make sure that the operations are running smoothly, and we can really focus on learning and teaching and supporting the work that's happening in our classrooms. I feel like we have a, a good plan in place, and I think we are on a long way to having the staff to support the operations of our districts. And again, it's adopted manual procedures and protocols for the business office. Instruction, so again, it was identified as a strength in an area for growth. I think as a district, we have a philosophy that, of improvement, that there's always room for growth. There's always more to learn. Students are dynamic. It's important that we all are on top- It's important that we all are on top of research and best practices. So I think really looking at the job of our educators, which is teaching and learning and helping them build their capacity, and really helping students communicate their ideas and show their thinking and demonstrate their understanding, and making sure that they're engaged in challenging, authentic, meaningful tasks so that they're ready for a college career in the twenty-first century. And again, one of the district's actions for the past two years, this has been a major focus, really thinking about, you know, our vision for teaching and learning and developing a shared vision and a common understanding of what are those research-based practices that we want to see in our classrooms that will engage our students and excite our students about learning. So the next is around educator evaluation. So one of the areas of growth was fully implement all components of the educator evaluation system with an emphasis on ensuring that educators are receiving high-quality feedback. So last, last year, we spent a lot of time surveying our faculty and staff around is the feedback that we're giving helpful and meaningful? We received a lot of feedback from educators. As a leadership team, we are spending a lot of time looking about at how we're calibrating our observations, thinking about how we can provide educators with more meaningful feedback that actually help grow and improve our practice. So we're really, as a leadership team, working on implementing fidelity and calibration of our observations and feedback that we're giving educators. So another recommendation is creating budget documents that are clear, comprehensive, and detail how the budgets support district and school goals. So again, I think we do an excellent job with our budgeting process. And I think as we look at the budget process, making sure we identify that this allocation is actually supporting this outcome of the school, so that it's tied to student outcomes and and this work will be happening around the recreation of a strategic plan and annual action. And again, this is, this next recommendation is really working with our towns to come up with a written agreement that accurately reflects services provided and the allocation of expenditures by the towns for the districts. So again, things like water and sewer, R S R Os and so forth. So overall, I think, I think whenever you have an outside organization or a committee come and actually look at what's happening in terms of your district, it's always a great exercise. I think they were very impressed with the team of five. They had a lot of positives to share about our district. They spoke about our educators and the climate and culture and our facilities. They were very impressed in terms of the metrics, the student outcomes that we see in terms of A C T, S A T, A P, N C A P. And they left with recommendations, but they also left with letting us know that we should be very proud of our organization moving forward. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the report.
Any questions? Lynn, do you have any questions?
You?
Yeah.
Hello, Amir.
What are you having for dinner? Do you have any questions for Greg?
Um, I think like the, I mean, some of these recommendations are very, very much.
Can you turn this on?
It's not just the, it's always been found that it's fun. I know we've been, like, nothing. Uh, could we just like, uh, say the rocket, uh, and there's a couple of them. I think we're well on our way.
So she said we're well on our way.
And there's always areas for improvement, and when a visiting team comes to look, they're always going to find areas for growth.
That's their job, otherwise they wouldn't have a job. So Lynn?
Yeah?
You might want to, do you have a mute on your end? Because we're picking up everything you're having for dinner.
Sorry. I just brought it over there.
Oh, if you're finishing, then no big deal.
All right, Paul.
So I had as much comments as, as questions, but, you know, grants, when they talk about the operational budget process and more transparency, one of the things in the, in the body of the report that they talked about was, you know, we don't plan grants. And grants kind of come out of the sky, actually, as often as not. Now some, maybe if we have a grant that's like a two or three-year payout, maybe year two and year three, you know, maybe it makes some sense to throw it in there, but, you know, we have always kind of treated those as more found money than anything else. But, you know, I tend to agree with you, Greg. I mean, I think our budget process is incredibly transparent, and I think the towns would agree. I mean, and in fact, in the complimentary section of the report, there's lots of verbiage that say that the town, the town administrations are enjoying the collaborative nature of the budget process with us. I thought that was a little bit of a, that kind of came out of left field. I also thought that they had a comment in there that seemed to indicate to me that when they visited classrooms, they expected all teachers to teach exactly the same. And teachers are humans just like the rest of us, and we all have different styles, and, you know, people are different, as far as I'm concerned. I was a little surprised to see that. I mean, I think they have the same curriculums and, and, you know, achieving the, the proper outcomes of educating the students makes all the sense in the world to me, but this seemed to kind of look to some, some roboticism, you know, across, across the board when they walked into a classroom. And I thought that was, that wasn't something that I personally would pay an awful lot of attention to if I were you. And then I did like the data analytics conversations that they had, and, you know, you need to do more reporting with, what did they say, disaggregated data, and not just a T Y L Y, but maybe trends over multiple years. I think the only solution that I see there to make some consistency between the towns and the buildings and the principals would be to kind of create almost a data analytics department in the central office and, you know, have them used as a resource kind of across the board. You might want to start giving some thought to prepping for something like that in, in some future years' budget planning. And that, that kind of made some sense to me that, you know, that, and it's something that we've always been talking about for as long as I've been on the committee, that, you know, you can't, if you can't measure it, you can't measure it, right? I mean, that's an old saw, but I mean, it's really true. And we could have better historical data in a lot of different areas than, than we have. But I think the only way to do that with any consistency is to centralize the, the activities there. And then lastly, the other thing that I was a little concerned about, I kind of whispered it in Dansey when we were sitting over there, the whole idea of asking the towns to document to us the services that they provide us, that seemed like a can of worms, and I'm not, you know, I, I wouldn't think we'd want to go chasing too quickly. And if we get criticized for it five years from now in the state from the back, well, you know, so be it, but, you know, it's, you know, being nice to us with the services they provide, I don't know that we necessarily want them to start hanging price tags on them.
I agree with Paul. I mean, I, that one really jumped out at me as, as, as potentially problematic. You start to now what, craft things, you need to get lawyers involved about what, in pricing, what we're going to do, what we're not going to do, how are we going to do it? I mean, we were very fortunate to have two very, you know, appreciative towns who support education, and in particular, this school, and, but yeah, once you start going down that path, you know, you don't know where it's going to end. I mean, if things were problematic, that'd be one thing. We actually have something pretty good going on, and so I, I do agree with Paul. I mean, these are recommendations, and do with them as you see fit, but I don't know that every single one of them needs to be implemented. You know, try, we don't need to fix something that's not broke.
And I think the site, the visiting team, retired superintendents, you know, finance directors, they have their own experiences that they bring to the table, and this is a unique, this is unique. Not, as you know, not every community operates in this way. So I think we, I think it might have been hard for them to understand the partnership that exists between the town of Southborough and the town of Northborough.
Kelly.
I agree in the sense like, let's not open something, like, we got a good thing, like, don't mess around. But at the same time, we have a good thing going, so let's get it documented so we know. Because then if things change on the town side, we don't want to be then stuck, you know? That's the way I'm, I'm taking it as, like, yeah, if things are going well, let's get it documented that these are the things you provide for this fee at this thing. So then if there is a town administration change, which could happen at any town, you know, we're not stuck then being like, oh, now we have to come up with all this extra stuff that we've never had to do before. I see it both ways, you know?
Paul.
First of all, I think, I just want to say, I think you did a great job, you know, taking this report and, and kind of addressing it head-on and taking on the things that they pointed out as challenges and not unsurprisingly, having plans to fix them all. But there was a couple that, that kind of jumped out at me, and one had to do with, they said, district-wide observed lessons were not designed to support and challenge all students. And it seemed to paint a picture of the elementary schools doing a better job of that than the middle and high schools. And I wondered, my thought was, maybe it's because we've had one-to-one technology at the elementary schools before they had it in the middle of the high schools. Do you think that has something to do with it?
No, I think the visit was, was on January sixth, seventh, and eighth. We had just returned from break. We were in the middle of changing semesters, and they were here for a very short window of time. So I think it's an important dataset to look at, but now we need to take that data and look at it and collect our own observational evidence to support that claim. I don't necessarily agree with that claim. I think, is that what they saw while they were here? Yes. Is that what we see when we observe classrooms on a daily and weekly basis? No.
Good.
You know, and I, I think, you know, in terms of, Paul, your comment around, you know, this robotic mentality. So, you know, we work hard to make sure that the outcomes for students are clear, that no matter who you have for a teacher, the outcome of, of your learning is going to be the same. But professional judgment is something that we value here, and there is some professional judgment in the work that happens in our classrooms. We don't expect teacher A, B, and C to be exactly the same.
My, my second point had to do with the evaluate, the educator evaluation system. And it seemed to me that the issues came down to a lack of resources. I mean, principals saying, you know, we just don't have time to go evaluate all these teachers, so what's the solution for that?
So I, I would say that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education created this, this tool.
Right.
Which is a significant amount of time and labor. It's not a flaw in terms of principals wanting to get into classrooms and seeing, learning, and giving good feedback. The tool is cumbersome. To do it well, educators or, you know, teachers, principal leaders could spend all their time doing this. So it is, it's a resource, but it's also the tool, what we're asking people to do. And is it yielding the right, the right results? The time we're spending writing up observational reports, is it yielding student outcomes? And, and we've taken that approach as a leadership team and saying, maybe we're writing too much. Maybe we're writing the wrong things. Maybe we need to do it differently, and that's how we're approaching it. Because I don't think it's, I don't think it's capacity. I don't think it's, we need more people. I think the system's broken.
Okay.
I had the same concerns that Paul had on those two, that was the challenges in areas for growth. And I think the first one, talking about what they saw, they observed in classrooms, that's not the whole picture that we have of our education. That was only a snapshot. Because as soon as I read that, I thought of the presentation that the Northborough Schools did on math, math learning one night. Rhoda was there, Greg was there. And what I observed was all these things that they said they didn't observe. And I think that, no, I don't go into the classrooms, but I do attend to things that parents go to. Some open houses, if it's a reading night, it was that math presentat, not presentation, but math games and kids teaching parents, right there, everything that I saw was just a saying about kids talking about their discourse, kids sharing their learning and having discussions. So I think that this, first I was a little bit alarmed, and then I said, but that's only a snapshot. That's only going in there once, and now Greg even saying that it would happen in January after vacation. All educators know what happens before, the day before vacation and after vacation. We've got to get them in the, in this drive again. And, you know, when, the next one, on the district's educator evaluation system, it isn't one that we own, it's one that was given to us by the state. Just as we have the objectives and the format and the tool to use, it comes from the state. And there's all kind of deadlines that are there, and it's also regulated by the number of days after you've been observed, when you have to get your report back. How many days after we get the report, you have to have a one-on-one? How many days after that do you have to have the sign thing? So that is regulated by the state, not so much as this is our district evaluation system. It's one that's been given to us from the state. So, and I agree that it is cumbersome, and there's a lot of information that has to give. I'm not as alarmed by that after, you know, the discussion on it. And what I also liked was that it wasn't just this report, that you have already looked at it with your staff, and you have come up with ideas on, I mean, steps in how to remedy these challenges or how to go forward. So I commend your staff and yourself for taking it one step further, this district review.
Mark.
So one of the recommendations that I think I resonated with was the second to last one about the district creating budget documents and then detailing how those budgets then align with district and school goals. I think having just completed the first year of my term and seeing the whole budget process play out, and then creating the next set of goals, I think I was looking to cycle back and sort of make connections of, okay, well, here's the money that we allocated, and here's how it supported the goal. So I definitely agree with that recommendation, and I could see some value in also aligning the budget then after the budget has been spent with the district and school goals. And it might already be done, it could be done, but I guess maybe just having transparency in that process. Anyone else?
Our next item is recommended, recommended two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school.
So in your packet is the, a draft of the recommended calendar. I'm not asking for a vote this evening, just putting it back in front of the committees. The last time I presented in September, there were two calendars. The second calendar required the Algonquin Regional Teachers Association to agree to start the Monday before Labor Day. And because we are going into contract negotiations, I think it's best that we not entertain that, that question with association. So the calendar in front of you is a pretty typical calendar that we see from year to year, and no changes from the last time you reviewed this particular version. And my recommendation would be to bring it for a vote at our December meeting.
Kelly.
When does the calendar need to be voted on? When does it, I know you just said recommended December, but I, like, when is like the, I'm just curious, because I, I was actually talking with a high school teacher today, and they were commenting about how late we're going to be getting out, June eighteenth. And if some of them knew that there was a potential to get out, you know, a week earlier, or starting a week earlier, that maybe there would be. So I'm just wondering if it can wait until after negotiations, so then that's something that's brought up around that time? Or is this something that needs to be published and issued before all that? Because I know we don't want to open up the can before it's open, but I'm just thinking, like, it's going to be open soon, so.
So we do have time.
Yeah.
So time is not the challenge. But I think, thinking about the community and parents and planning, and it happened soon, and we're already receiving calls, do you know what the calendar's going to look like? So it's really about trying to provide the community and parents with a calendar that they can actually be mindful and playful around. they can actually be mindful and planful around.
I had a question for a parent today, actually, about, I thought it was a good one. Why are professional development days, like, how are those picked exactly? Is there a reason there?
So election days are, you know, are a priority, so obviously next year, major election, so that's the first priority in terms of where we select. And then we, we have five professional development days in our contracts, our association contracts. Two are site-based, which means that the building principal creates plans for their buildings. Those can be anytime within the calendar year. We typically have one in the fall and one before school starts. We have two district days. One of those district days is flexible professional learning, so teachers can use hours at their, their decision and decide what they want to focus on. And then one district day, which is usually the election day. We tend not to have PD day, district days and site-based days in January because of the weather and we find most of the time is helpful upfront when we launch the school year. The professional development committee does work on selecting the dates as well.
Sean?
So I, I have two questions. One is, you said there were five professional development days?
One is a teacher use day, so, or teacher return day.
So it's not squared?
Correct.
On here?
So, so they have a teacher return day, which is considered a PD day for them.
What, what do you mean a teacher return?
So it's basically before school starts.
Yeah.
They have one day to make sure that they prepare their classrooms.
Some time, no, I guess. Not, not, okay. Okay. Thank you. And I, I don't see like conferences scheduled on here, I think.
Which are half-days.
So are those scheduled by each town?
Correct.
Is that why they're not on here?
Correct.
By each school.
By each school.
Yeah. So like, usually there's like a principal in Northborough and a principal in Southborough that does the calendars for their, all the schools in those towns.
Do the principals decide those, the half-days?
Uh, yes, we, we come together as a leadership team, Southborough and then Northborough, and select those dates early spring so parents know what those dates are moving forward.
Our next order is approval of grants and donations.
So this summer, I shared with the committee that we received a donation from Synopsys of office furniture, so it was a, if you've been to the central office, we have a nice new conference, not new to us, conference table and chairs. We also received cubicles, which allowed us to redesign some of our office spaces. And I did check with legal counsel who made a recommendation that it would be wise for us to accept the donation as committees.
Would I still move for the region? Second for the region.
So we, so we're gonna.
Go in order.
We're gonna go in order, so we're gonna do Northborough first.
I move for Northborough that we accept the donation for the furniture.
Okay, so Joan for Northborough.
I'll second for Northborough.
Lauren, second.
I'll move for Southborough. Can I squeeze in the union too?
I'll second for union.
We're gonna keep them separate.
Second for Southborough.
So.
Second for Southborough.
Okay, so Roger for Southborough, second for Southborough. Paul is first for Southborough. Roger's second. Our union is Paul.
Second for union.
Second for union. Kelly? All right, and then Regent is Paul Bucka and seconded by Dan. Okay, so, did you get that?
Do you need to roll call both for?
No, so just hands for Northborough, all those. Okay? Approved, Southborough. All good? And then union? All good? And then we need a roll call for Regent.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, so that's all good. And then superintendent goes our last.
Can I just, oh, I've been in the central office a lot, it's fantastic. This furniture looks brand new.
Mm-hmm.
It is unbelievable. I mean, I don't, have no idea what the, you know, value of it is, but it has to be thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of office equipment that is in perfect condition.
Yeah, the chairs are fun.
Yeah.
So as a central office, we're always looking for donations of good, good office furniture.
Comfortable.
Comfortable.
Okay, so our last is the superintendent goals.
So in your packet is my updated goals from our last conference conversation. I did reduce my goals from six to four. However, I still will work on those two goals I removed. It's not a favorite.
So if that is it, I just need to do this, motions to adjourn again. Northborough.
Motion for Northborough to adjourn the meeting. Do I need to motion for union? I'll motion just in case you do.
So you're voting for union and Northborough?
Yes. Okay.
Second for Northborough.
Second for Northborough. Southborough?
No move.
Okay. Paul for Southborough, first for Southborough. Second is Roger. We need a second for union.
Second.
Paul Desmond, second for union, and then Regent.
Motion for Regent.
Second.
Okay. Joan and Kathleen for Regent.
Off to the instrumental concert. She hasn't played yet.
So, um, Northborough, all those in favor of adjourning? All right, so, okay. Um, Southborough, union, and a roll call for Regent.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Thank you. All right, guys, have a nice night.